All right, I will call this meeting to order of the Regular City Planning Commission of June 26, 2017. Attendance?
Yes, attendance noted and the Planning Commission's secretary is absent, so please appoint someone to take that role tonight.
Brian, you've been appointed a secretary. You just have to sign something. So I'll ask for approval of the minutes of the Regular Planning Commission meeting of May 22, 2017. Is there a motion? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye, aye. Motion carries. All right, so this is the opportunity for citizens to address the commission items not on the agenda, and I'm told we have someone. Yay, come on up. State your name and sign in, please. Yes.
Is that before or after?
After is fine.
I will speak first. Hi, everybody. So I'm Mia Simpson, I'm a member of the Arts Commission in Richfield, and I wanted to bring up a couple opportunities for commission members to collaborate together coming up very soon. So we have a Fourth of July parade on Tuesday, and members of multiple commissions will be walking with the Citizen of the Year float. So if you are interested in participating in that and walking with the other commission members, we would love to have you. So I've gotten multiple commission meetings. We've gotten a few takers from arts, human rights, community service, and I'm hoping I can get a person or two from here. So there's one opportunity, I will follow up. And then the second is that we want to do multi-commission effort as part of Penn Fest. And so that's probably going to include a table that will include some sort of activity for citizens to basically learn about the city. So to understand who their city council members are, what their commissions do, and we're thinking maybe some kind of trivia, we haven't really figured out all the details yet. But if you're interested in supporting that with us, Sarah Gumke and I and a couple members of the Transportation Committee are also going to be participating in that. So we would love to have you, and we're looking for as many opportunities as we can to work together. So in terms of maybe gathering names and emails, we'll need an email and your name. I don't know, Erin, if you can facilitate that and email me or whatever you think is best is fine.
Yep, we'll connect through Melissa and get everyone's email.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect.
This is exciting, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I just had a question. For the Penn Fest, is that tabling the event throughout the whole event, or are you guys going to do shifts or anything like that?
We could do shifts.
Okay.
Yeah, it's flexible. So I think right now it would just be volunteering to be part of kind of the organizing committee, and then we'll figure out how we want to, you know, provide labor and the organizational piece from there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, moving on to other business. So we have consideration of the 2019 to 2022 Capital Improvement Program and a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan of the Capital Improvement Program and the 2018 Capital Improvement Budget.
Thank you Chair Reece Daniels. Can we also just make a quick announcement? Item number four on your agenda is related to 6808 Third Avenue. If you're here related to that item, just so you know, we are going to be continuing that public hearing to July 24. So the only action tonight will be to say that we're going to talk about it again in one month. If you're here for that item, again, I don't want you to have to wait through the entire meeting. We'll talk about that one in July, July 24.
Thank you, you asked me three times and I totally spaced it out already.
Okay, so moving on to the CIB/CIP. Each year, the city manager makes a recommendation to the city council regarding the capital improvement budget, the CIB, for the upcoming year. The Planning Commission is responsible for reviewing the capital improvement plan and making a recommendation to the city council. The commission is also responsible for ensuring that the CIB and CIP are consistent with the comprehensive plan. That is your primary responsibility, reviewing the plan and making sure that it's consistent with our comprehensive plan. Not necessarily making sure that you agree with certain dollar amounts, the details, but making sure, again, that this is moving in the direction that the comprehensive plan is. So tonight Finance Manager Chris Regis is here with a brief presentation for you.
Thank you, members of the commission. I'm Finance Manager Chris Regis, as Melissa said. Some of the stuff here Melissa has pretty much already talked about, but some parts of the process here is projects are identified by city commissions, departments, and the HRA. Preliminary report is generated by the city manager and presented to the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission reviews the projects based on the following consideration. The proposed projects conform to the comprehensive plan. Upon recommendation from the Planning Commission, it's returned to the city manager, who then formalizes the plan and includes it in the annual budget. The total budget and program, the total 2008 Capital Improvement Budget right now is at a little more than $18 million. The total Capital Improvement Plan from 2019 to 2022 is at $96.8 million. Some of the significant projects are included in this. 2018 is year three of the six-year mill and overlay program, estimated project cost is $19.5 million. 2018, the 66th Street reconstruction, which essentially planning started in 2016. Construction has started in 17 here, and it'll continue on into 2018. But the total estimated project cost is $61.2 million. 2018 is the 77th Street underpass, estimated project cost of $24.5 million. Design for that has started back in 2017. At this time, I'm not sure when construction would start, but they're still, we're still putting together with the funding. I think most of it is put together, it's just a matter of getting the design done and getting it approved. 2019 includes Lyndale Avenue reconstruction with an estimated cost of $10 million. 2019 is the beginning of a water meter upgrade that'll be spread over three years. 2020, the 65th Street reconstruction, estimated project cost of $8 million. And then 2022, 77th, or excuse me, 70th Street and 76th Street West reconstruction, estimated cost of approximately $7.9 million for those two projects. And then beyond 2022, several, three significant projects, the Humboldt Avenue, Lake Shore Drive reconstruction of $4 million, Nicollet Avenue and Penn Avenue reconstructions with estimated costs of $13 million. These are the significant projects, if there's a lot of other small projects within the plan, a lot of recreation projects, a lot of utility projects and things like that, so. But these are the ones, usually it's the right-of-way projects, and it's been that way for the last three, four years. A lot of the road construction and stuff, and that's pretty much what, you know, makes up the bulk of the plan. And that's all I have, it's pretty short and sweet. Any questions or anything, I'll try to answer.
Is anyone have questions? Do you want to start? Go ahead.
I am new to the commission, so this is kind of my first time looking at this budget. How will this budget change, especially regarding the Capital Improvement Program when we have the new comp plan for 2019 to 2022?
Tell me out on this, Melissa, but my feeling is, is that as long as the projects in the plan still conform to the comprehensive plan, I don't know if they will, I don't know how much they will change. I mean, they have to conform to what the plan, the comprehensive plan says, and as long as they do that, I don't know if there'll be much of a change, does that make sense or?
Right, so most of these big investment projects for the city, especially the right-of-way projects, kind of fall under the category of just maintenance and upkeep. And those things I don't anticipate to ever really fall out of the comprehensive plan. The things that could change are perhaps in our transportation system, how we focus on roads and their specific design and connectivity and bike lanes and pedestrian things. So the form of the project could change, but the fact that we're going to need to reconstruct those roads will not. In terms of the recreation projects, for instance, we are doing a master, a parks master plan as part of the comprehensive plan. Most of these projects, again, span years, and so we review the comprehensive, the CIB and CIP each year and go back to that comprehensive plan. If the new comprehensive plan identified a community center, for instance, as a, as a priority for the community, and this budget changed, we would come back next year when that was seen in the budget and reflected differently and make sure that, yes, this is what our community said, they said this is a priority, that's why this shows up this way now in the CIP. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, just a, well, a couple of things. One, with all the right-of-way projects that have outside funding sources, I assume this is the normal way to do it, other than looking at Richfield's once a year, I don't know. It's a little confusing to me though, because there are these large dollar amounts that I know aren't city dollars. Things like the 77th Street underpass, is the city individually putting in $6 million in 2018, or is that just money that's passing through the city?
Well, I know a bulk of the funding for 77th Street underpass, I think approximately $10 million is coming from the state. Well, actually approximately $12 million is coming through the state through state bonding. They've got 1.5 from the county, so that money's going to be coming into us. I think we're going to be the lead agency on the project, so the money will be coming into the city, and the city will be acting as the lead agency. So all the money, the bills will come to us and we'll pay the bills out from this funding and stuff like that. Yeah, there is approximately 4.3 million that they're still trying to put together for that. That's showing up in the 2019 Capital Improvement Plan schedule there. But mostly the other money is state bonding and county money. Like I said, they're trying to put together the remaining 4.3 million according to this information I've been given. I really couldn't give you a better answer than that, because I don't work in engineering, so I don't know how they're coming up with what their thoughts are and stuff like that, so I apologize for that.
So in terms of this, because 77th Street is led by the city, we're seeing larger dollar amounts than 66th Street, which is led by the county?
Well, the county is the lead agency on that, but we're showing the total costs for 66th Street. We're just showing it as part of the plan, I mean, I think there's approximately, I know I saw somewhere there was approximately 25 million in the detail sheet that I have, that's coming in from the county, the county's contributing, but that's really not reflected in here.
Okay, thank you.
You have questions? Anyone else? I did have a question about the Penn liquor store remodel, the 1.2 million for 2018. Have we started looking at plans for that? And, you know, is that going to fit with our comp plan and our kind of Penn Central corridor as we envision it to look?
I believe that there have been preliminary estimates, I have not seen any plans.
Okay.
So it's in the very preliminary, like how much do we need to put in a budget stage as opposed to plan review or anything more detailed than that. I will tell you that the Community Development Department makes it difficult for administration to forget that we have these rules.
Yes.
We're very excited about our rules.
Because as I say, it's
They're aware.
It's hard to approve money for something we have no idea if it's actually going to envision part of the comp plan, but I know that Penn Central as a corridor being updated is great, and so I think we would hold strict to those guidelines.
Yes, and in terms of council goals, redevelopment along Penn Avenue is a high priority, and so I don't think that there's any way that the Penn Avenue Liquor Store would not do its very best to embody the principles that we've adopted on Penn Avenue.
I guess I'm wondering about the use of the term remodel on that, because that suggests that it's the existing building, is that already determined? Or would that be determined as part of the estimate?
I believe they're still looking at options.
Okay.
I don't think it's been decided.
Do you happen to know how much was spent on, I know we approved it for 2017, the liquor store down?
Cedar?
Yes.
Approximately $1 million.
Okay, okay.
And that includes their putting in a new sign, which will be going in, I think they're starting the next week, I think, or this week or something like that. But it includes that and some other work they've done, but yeah. It's a very nice store though now.
It is.
But I do just want to echo Erin's comments, because I, I hope that as this moves forward, I don't feel strongly enough about knowing this dollar amount and feeling strongly to vote against this, but I was disappointed with how the Cedar Avenue Liquor Store turned out. I don't think it was a great example for the area, and particularly in Penn where we have such a priority of redeveloping that corridor in a certain way. I would hope that the city is able to use these funds or an appropriate amount of funds to be able to be a good example for businesses in that area.
The Penn Avenue site is very small. So I think we'll have to look at it very carefully to see if reconstruction would be an option. I think that's why thus far it's been thought of as a remodel.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? We're voting, yes? Okay, do we have, is there a motion?
I move the staff recommendation to recommend approval of the 2019, 2022 Capital Improvement Plan and adopt a resolution finding that is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Is there a second? Any discussion, comments? Motion? All right, all those in favor say aye, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you. All right, our next agenda item is a public hearing to consider requests for a conditional use permit and variance to allow a restaurant at 6436 Penn Avenue.
All right, Chair Reece Daniels, members of the Planning Commission. Nielsen Foods is proposing to open a Subway restaurant in the building at 6436 Penn Avenue. Fast food or convenience restaurants are a conditionally permitted use in the Mixed Use Community or MUC zoning district. In addition to the conditional use permit, the applicant is requesting approval of a variance to reduce the off-street parking requirement. Subway plans to occupy approximately 1,500 square feet of the building, while the remaining 8,000 square feet would be occupied by the building's owner, a company called Dynamic Products Midwest or DPM. The parking requirement for fast food or convenience restaurants is 17 spaces per 1,000 square feet. And for wholesale businesses, which is what we're classifying DPM as, the requirement is one space per 800 square feet. Based strictly on the square footage of the building, the combined parking requirement for both businesses would be 33 total spaces, or 23 for Subway, 10 for DPM. There are 17 spaces available on the property, and there is not any additional space to create any more parking. Several unique factors exist to justify reducing this parking requirement. Despite the large amount of space and despite the large amount of building space that they occupy, DPM actually just has 12 total employees, several of whom walk, work off-site entirely, telecommuting, or others are dispatched throughout the field, in the fields throughout most of the workday. Much of the building is used as storage for their equipment and product inventory. And there's an area, there's an area behind the building that cannot technically be counted as parking spaces due to kind of a narrow access aisle and stall dimensions that are just not compliant with the zoning code. We can't actually count that as parking, but DPM does allow up to five employee vehicles to fit back in that area, which will further reduce pressure on the parking lot. Furthermore, the city's parking requirement for fast food restaurants are much higher than Subway's own corporate requirements of one space per 125 square feet, or which works out to 12 spaces for this size of restaurant. Lastly, this location is in close proximity to a concentration of apartment buildings and other businesses, and it's reasonable to assume that some percentage of the customers and employees will choose to walk rather than drive to this location. Given, given the existing usage of the building, staff does not anticipate that parking shortages will occur. And finding that the proposal meets all requirements, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit and variance. Staff can stand for any questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well. If you have any questions, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Staff or the applicant? I do have a question. So on the Hennepin County property map that's taken from 2017, there are 17 cars parked there right now. Was Image 360 open at the time that this image was taken?
That's correct, yes. So, so Image 360 is, for those that don't know, is a business that used to occupy that entire space. If you're on the page that Erin's talking about, I think it's, looks like page 29 in the packet. Subway is actually just going to occupy half of that former Image 360 space, and this, the image that you see with, with many cars in the parking lot at the time, yes, was definitely taken when Image 360 was still in business. I believe these aerial images are from like early 2015. The actual photograph, even though it says 2017 on there, but the actual aerial photos from like early 2017, I'm sorry, early 2015 is when that was taken, and Image 360 was definitely occupying that space at the time.
That helps, thank you. Any other questions? Staff?
My only other sort of question or comment is about two years ago, we had a work session about parking in this area, and there was, I think, some consensus at that time that the parking requirements should be reduced, if not eliminated, in this area. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to this variance, but the word, the word "unique" jumped out at me, because it seems like almost every one of these properties is unique in the Penn Avenue corridor, and I, I wish that we weren't even here to have to give them a parking variance, because it, it doesn't seem like there's anything unique about this compared to the other sites. And it's clear that our requirement is significantly more than this use actually seems to need. So I guess my question is, what, what happened with that, are we still looking at that?
Sure, thanks, I can, I can respond to it in part. We did go out the, after the work session, and we talked to folks about it at Open Streets, the Penn Fest. And as is typical with these types of questions, we got about half the people saying, yeah, that sounds like a great idea, and half the people saying, Salon Gennello parks on my street, the pizza place, they park on my street, it's terrible. We had business owners saying that people going to restaurants park in their spot, and they park people in, and then people can't get out. Based on that feedback, we didn't move forward. At that time, we kind of decided that maybe a case-by-case basis was a good option, because there would be a public hearing. You know, I think when that work session happened, I think staff was completely on board with, let's get rid of parking requirements in this area. Let's let the market figure it out. And based on that feedback, we backed off a bit. I think we're still open to it, we're still open to considering it. Maybe needs some more outreach, I don't think that there is a perfect solution in this area.
I mean, one thought that I have is, I absolutely believe you, that half, possibly even more than half of people complained about the cars there, but it seems like almost 100% of Richfielders are dissatisfied with the level of development in that area, and if this is one thing we can do to make that easier on potential businesses, I would like to see us do that. And then one other thought specific to this is, we've relied on chains and franchises guidance for their own parking needs, which I like relying on the business's own more accurate calculation, but I do worry when we rely on those that were sort of giving an advantage to chain and, and franchise businesses, because they can know more accurately than a small business that's starting, starting off. So I would rather see relaxed requirements for everybody versus being able to take that advice and run with it here. So I hope, we hope we continue to revisit that issue.
Good point. Any other questions for staff?
I have a question. How will the design of this subway in this building fit in with the design guidelines that are put up by the Penn Avenue corridor?
Yes, so the, because of the site, you know, we looked at, we, with any site, we look at opportunities where, number one, where landscaping can be added. We'd like, on any site, we'd like to see increased landscaping. That's just because of the nature of the site, being, it's got 100% paved over, and all of the, all of the areas that are not parking spaces being essentially needed for circulation, there is no opportunity for permanent landscaping here. What we, what we look at secondly is an opportunity, what we've done for some other, very similar sites on Penn Avenue that have that same challenge, we've looked at places where they could put like a permanent, or a large movable planter, something that can, you know, have plantings throughout the, throughout the summer, seasonal decor in the winter to kind of liven up the, the appearance of the storefronts. That, again, we've, we've been successful with that on other sites, that just wasn't an opportunity here. There's just not an obvious, you know, safe place for it to go, that wouldn't encumber access. So then lastly, one place where they can meet the Penn Avenue design guidelines is by having their signage be a, an awning-style sign, and that's also something we've required. And we can, it's not codified into the sign ordinance, but that's something that we have required for businesses that are in the Penn Avenue corridor in the past.
Could you talk a little bit about the storefront of the subway and how it will fit into the Penn Avenue guidelines for storefronts? It says that it should be compatible with a historic building style.
So I'm not sure what page of the, the Penn Avenue design guidelines you're looking at. In this case of a reuse of a site, you know, we don't require them to remodel the, we don't require them to necessarily remodel the aesthetics of the storefront, like putting in new storefront windows or anything like that. I think the, this building in particular, for, for a repurposed building meets, meets some of that, you know, it'd be better if the building was pulled up to the, pulled up to the sidewalk and had direct pedestrian access. That's just not the case here.
I guess I'm concerned that we're going to have another franchise right across the street and, or, you know, a block down, and I'm wondering how that is kind of going to fit into the overall design of the Penn Avenue corridor look.
Sure. So I mean, we can't, you know, we, we can't regulate the, the actual businesses that go in, only the type. The design guidelines speak to aesthetics. Aesthetics, signage types, design types, but, you know, we can't restrict specifically the, you know, chain versus, versus local through those design guidelines.
Would it be possible, I mean, if we were thinking about the parking restrictions or adding additional parking spots or taking parking spots, that the subway then make an agreement to address the storefront? So it could fit more in with kind of the aesthetic that we're thinking about for Penn Avenue?
Are there some changes to the storefront that you had in mind?
I guess in thinking about the, if we're thinking about like a historic building style, I think of cities like Robinsdale, where they have the Robinsdale Main Street, and they have different stores that kind of all look alike, or 50th and France, where even if they have a Caribou Coffee or a Subway, it kind of fits in with the rest of the mall and the rest of the look and landscaping. So I'm wondering if we're going block to block, kind of how we're, how that subway would fit in with the overall design that we're thinking about for Penn.
Right, and so I think what we're trying to do there is with, with those design guidelines, is regulate signage, encourage awnings, encourage covered entrances, things like that, and I, I believe Subway is doing an awning.
They, so they will be required to, their signage will be required to be an awning on the front of the building. We are, we are requiring a, it's not specifically tied into the Penn Avenue design guidelines, but we are requiring a pedestrian connection from the sidewalk to the, to the handicap accessible aisle, to at least give a striped connection there for better pedestrian accessibility. And then not related to this property in particular, but we did just receive a grant from Hennepin County specifically for the Penn Avenue corridor to do, it's going to be a matching, it's going to be a matching grant. I don't have the, the amounts in front of me, we're still working on the, we're still working on the guidelines, but it'll be rolled out later this summer, hopefully, in which the city will be doing matching grants with property owners in, limited to the Penn Avenue corridor, specifically for the purposes of upgrading the, the appearance, whether that be through signage, new facades, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
I think what's challenging is that we don't have a visual of the storefront. You know, we've got the kind of the inside plans, but not the visual. As I look at Google Maps, this is a brick building, which would be historic-esque, I guess, you know, historic can be lots of different things. And since they're only taking half of the building, what's going in the other half? And are we going to come back with need for more parking, or is that just sitting vacant?
Yeah, so that was, that was definitely a question we had for the property owner as well, given that, like you noted, Image 360 occupied this whole half of the building, and now Subway is taking approximately a quarter of the, the total property. Because there are basically like two buildings on this property.
There's two entrances.
Yeah, so DPM is, they, they occupy the entire larger half of the building, they're north of the Subway. They're actually just going to use the remaining portion for storage.
Okay.
They're not, at this time, they're not planning to lease it out to anyone. We did put in the resolution a restriction that it could not be leased to a restaurant.
Okay.
So that, should that, that remaining, I think it's, it's either, it's 1,500 square feet or less, what's, what's left in that part of the building, and, you know, that they would not be able to lease to a restaurant, they'd be limited to, you know, a service office, something with much less parking demand than a restaurant.
Yeah, it's hard without that front visual, right? And is that awning going to continue, or is it going to stop just over the Subway? Will DPM continue, because they currently have an awning, right? Will it continue that awning so that the whole building becomes in compliance, a little bit better with that?
Yeah, and we, we haven't required that in the past for these, for properties on Penn, when, when, when the tenant that is before us for this application, we haven't required them to make other parts of the building compliant. We could certainly make that a condition of, you could certainly add that as a condition, that they add an awning over the entire, I guess, southern building. that they add an awning over the entire, I guess, southern building. That DPM puts something up there, but I'm, I think the entrance is right in the middle. There's kind of two doors where the Subway half of the building and the, what's going to be storage, basically, share a common wall.
It'll be like, storage, Subway, DPM, as I'm looking at it.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we?
Well, I would just like to say that I would like to see, I would feel more comfortable voting if I saw what the storefront was going to look like visually. And I would also feel more comfortable voting if we could attempt to have new businesses that are opening on Penn match some sort of design guideline that the City of Richfield has kind of put out. So, and I'm wondering, if we have that plan, it might be nice to stick to that plan?
So I totally hear your concerns about, and I think a lot of us have been concerned about, we have this great document and these beautiful pictures and they're not really happening. But I also want us to bear in mind that this building is here now, it's not in use now. And I think, trying to think strategically about how can we allow it to be occupied and allow this business to exist and allow us to have some vitality here without expecting us to have to wait until they have to tear down the whole building and redo it. I feel very strongly, I do not like parking in front, I like what's envisioned in the guidelines, but the building is here today and I feel like I'm inclined to support sort of the minimum effort that allows it to be used. I guess one detailed aesthetic thing that is particularly bad about the building right now is the parking stalls go directly onto the sidewalk. In fact, hoods can even extend over into the sidewalk. Is it required, is it possible to require fencing or any sort of barrier to that edge of the parking lot to sidewalk?
It's possible that, so the parking lot is already narrower than it should be for a double-loaded corridor. I'm sure that, you know, it's just existing, non-conforming in terms of dimensions. So if you were to back those cars up even further to allow some kind of fencing there along Penn, I think your access aisle might get to the point where, you know, emergency vehicle could not even fit through there. And I think, I think beyond that, Hennepin County has, so Penn is Hennepin County Road, and, you know, Hennepin County is pretty particular about not allowing structures within a certain distance of the right-of-way. So I think if you were proposing fence or bollards or something like that, they would have to even be set back a number of feet behind the property line, potentially pushing your parking even further back. And Penn Avenue is, you know, proposed to be reconstructed in the distant future, in the early 2020s.
It'll be here before you know it.
Right. And just to tag along on that, the requirement for anything along that sidewalk is a three-foot setback to allow for plowing, and particularly here where you're pinched by the utility poles. If you put a fence or bollards, right, the public works.
So even bollards where there's space for snow to fall in between is still a no-go?
Three feet.
Is there a possibility of doing wheel stops at least, so the hoods are limited in how far they can go?
We could look at wheel stops.
I don't know. It's something, I don't know that it aesthetically improves anything when the cars aren't there, but it at least prevents it from approaching.
I'm not sure that that's going to get around the public works, plowing concern, depending on where they set the wheel stops. Perhaps those can be set far enough back.
Yeah, okay. I don't know. What are you thinking about your concerns?
Well, I'm just wondering if we're putting another franchise in a block down, are we requiring a teardown and a, when they rebuild, that it will be along the lines of the Penn Avenue frontage guidelines? Or are we just allowing it to look as though it would be as any franchise in any city?
Can you clarify what you're talking, what other franchise you're talking about?
Is there a donut shop or something going in near the corner on Penn?
So.
I don't recall if we voted on that.
No, we have not. It has not come before anybody's for approval. There has been talk of Dunkin' Donuts. They actually just submitted an application, but it has not become before anybody's. It is a new building. They are proposing to tear down the carhop building and construct new. And yes, of course, if you're constructing a new building, we are going to hold you to the standards, again, as much as possible on these narrow, difficult, half-block sites of Penn Avenue. But I would say that that's a very different scenario than a tenant coming into an existing multi-tenant building.
Sure. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? We'll open the public hearing. Did you guys know? All right. Well, this is a public hearing. So if anybody would like to come up and speak, you can come up and make statements. We'll also be able to answer any questions you may have. Yeah, come on up. Just state your name and sign in for the record. Thank you. And address as well. And you have five minutes to speak. I review her bylaws.
My name is Steve Nielsen. I'm the franchisee with, trying to put the Subway in that building we're talking about. Yeah, it's, the parking is kind of a difficult situation, and we understand that. One thing to point out there, our busiest time is in our evening, you know, our dinner hours are probably our busiest time. And the, my landlord, DPM, they basically are like an eight to five. It's like an office warehouse kind of situation. So after five o'clock, there'll be no other cars parking there. And then, of course, the weekends will be totally clear as far as any vehicles there other than, that opens up everything for our Subway shop to take care of our customers. The space behind it, just the way, I mean, it's a big building. I mean, it's like 9,000, 10,000 square feet, and we're going to take 1,300 to 1,500 square feet of it. And the way it's set up, it is a double-door entrance, so we're going to be on the right side, and then the other side would be vacant and used for storage by DPM and so forth. So I think we can deal with the parking. I don't think that's going to, you know, affect our flow of our customers and cause any big confusion with everybody. And they do have the parking spaces out back, which Matt said was, it's not technically parking, but they park back there, you know, with some of their, some of their office people. So just give you a kind of a heads up on what's going on there. And then our new design is going to be, we're, we have a new design Subway does, it's more of a, let's say, modern look, you know, with plastic furniture. You know, you see a lot of the restaurants, you know, are taking that approach, the clean look, white. We have a new logo, new uniforms. It's just a complete old makeover of what Subway used to be. So we're kind of excited about it. So, and we look forward to it because Penn Avenue has a lot of traffic, and we think we can be successful there, so. That's what it is.
I just, do you plan on being open for breakfast?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Definitely. Yep.
Does anybody have any questions for the developer? Applicant? No? All right. Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Is there anyone else here for the public hearing for this item? Anybody? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? No one? All right. Now would be the time for a motion. Does anyone want to make a motion? Otherwise, I will.
I will move the staff recommendation to approve the CUP and the variance for Subway.
As is.
As is.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion?
Just one other question. Is Subway required to have a bike rack here?
I believe based on the, based on the number of parking spaces total, it's below 20, they're not, it's not required.
Isn't it based on the required number of spaces, not the number of spaces after a variance?
It's, that's correct. That was an oversight on my part then. We will, yes, we'll work with them. We can, I don't know if you want to, you can modify your motion to require it. Otherwise, we noted to them that it was recommended but not required, but you're absolutely correct. It's based on the required number of parking spaces.
It was Monday night trivia for.
Not the actual number of parking spaces provided, which is below 20, but yes.
So I would like to modify my motion, and I guess I'll need a second for that to require an appropriate bike rack and go wild, but at least the, at least the city minimum, please.
Is there a second to the amendment?
A second.
All right. I hate the parking here. We've talked many about this. So I think you're never going to get good parking. I think you're going to get spill over, but it is what it is. But I agree, you know, it's mostly during these off-hours of the other place, so. I think it's good. I would like to see the awning extended, though. I don't know if you want to amend, can I amend the motion?
You could make a motion to amend.
You can offer a friendly amendment, and then he can accept your amendment.
I would offer a friendly amendment to extend the awning all the way to the end of the building, so as it continues on, to give that kind of face as we should.
I accept that amendment.
Do we need a second?
Madam Chair, which end of the building are you referring to?
So DPM currently has a awning, and then Subway would have the awning and then have it continue to the end. So the awning would go across the whole length of the building.
With the full one-story.
So it's a full one-story. There's the street view if you're, so Subway would be there and then continue the awning all the way to the end, so there isn't a chunk missing and it fits a little bit more into the guidelines. Any other discussion? No? There was a motion mended a couple of times, so awning, bike rack, and recommendation. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right. Let's get back to my agenda. Item number three, public hearing to consider request for conditional use permit and variances to allow a restaurant and cafe to operate in the former Richfield Floral Space at 817 East 66th Street.
Thank you. The property at 817 East 66th Street was previously occupied by Richfield Floral and Garden, which closed for business earlier this year. Local Roots Fine Foods would like to open a restaurant and cafe in the building, along with a separate retail space. Traditional or cafeteria-style restaurants are a conditional use in the C2 General Business District. In addition to the conditional use permit, the applicant is requesting approval of two variances. The first of those variances, it's, has to do with the zoning designations of the property. It's highly technical in nature, so I'm going to refer to a visual aid as we talk this one through. You want to go to page 45 on your packets? Maybe if we could have the tech bring up the, the display on our end, and we'll get All right. Sounds like everyone's there, so we'll get right into it. So this variance is required due to the existing zoning designations on the property. The north 125 feet of the property is zoned, the C2 General Business, while the south 75 feet of the property is zoned multifamily residential, or MR2. Regarding when a parcel like this is split between two zoning districts, the code states, "The provisions of the code, which pertain to either zoning district, may be applied to the entire lot or for a distance of 30 feet from such district boundary line, whichever is less." So what you can see in your visual aid there is that the northern, the northern piece of the property where the building sits is all zoned C2 General Commercial. And then to the south, you have 75 feet that is zoned MR2 Multifamily Residential. The code allows an extension of that C2 zoning district up to 30 feet. And what we're looking for a variance, what the applicant is asking for is a variance to extend that C2 zoning district over basically the remainder of the parcel, or 75 feet, is what that winds up being. That south 75 feet of the lot that's zoned MR2 was previously a separate lot. And in fact, it still currently shows up on the Hennepin County property map as a separate lot. To ensure that that south lot, which contains half of the parking spaces for the building, to ensure that it could not be sold off separately from the building, the applicant was required to combine those two parcels. This combination, in turn, created that split zoning situation where you have two zoning districts covering a single parcel. Prior to the 2008 comprehensive plan, that south lot was actually also zoned C2. The entire property was C2, basically going back before 2008. The plan recommended medium-density residential as a buffer between commercial properties on 66th Street and the single-family residential properties to the south, kind of throughout the East 66th Street corridor. It was just looked at as kind of a blanket, using medium-density as a buffer between commercial and single-family residential. So that resulted in rezoning the property to MR2 back in 2010. However, this rezoning was done, this rezoning was done without specifically reviewing the actual use of this property as a parking lot related to the building. So rather than rezone the property to C2 at this time, the comprehensive plan and zoning district designations should be reevaluated as part of the comprehensive plan update, which is currently underway. So that was a lot. Before we move on to parking, does anyone have any questions about that piece?
I'm just, so to clarify, the action you're asking us to take tonight will not actually make this part of the C2 zone. It'll still be an MR2 parcel that is treated as C2.
That is exactly correct. Yes. In the zoning ordinance, it will still be classified as MR2, but we're, they're, basically, the code allows you to apply one district for 30 feet, and they're asking for a variance from the code to extend that over the whole parcel.
But if the intent is to make sure that this can't ever be sold off to become like an MR2 use, why isn't it just being rezoned? Or why this action instead of a rezoning?
With, basically rezoning it would also require amending the comp plan. The comp plan designates the parcel, the comp plan designates that southern part as medium-density residential, so you couldn't rezone it to C2 without amending the comp plan first. And with the comp plan update so close in the, I guess, you know, in the next year and a half or so from being adopted, we just figured it would be better to address it at that time.
That makes sense. Thank you very much.
Any other questions on this part before? No? Okay.
All right. Moving on to parking, the applicant is also requesting a variance to reduce the off-street parking requirement. Local Roots plans to occupy approximately 3,185 square feet in the building, while the remaining 515 square feet would be subleased to an unidentified retail office or service user. The total parking requirement between those two uses would be 31 spaces, while only 24 spaces are available on the property. Much of the restaurant area, if you look at the interior layout, which you'll see just one page before that, page 44, you'll see how the space is laid out to accommodate many, many sort of subuses beyond dining area seating, including space for an art gallery, office and storage space, and a large children's play area. The restaurant is planned to accommodate just 20 seats. Based on these factors, staff does not anticipate a parking shortage. Should the parking demand increase in the future, there is space adjacent to the rear parking lot where a current landscaping area could be converted into up to seven parking spaces. And you can see that on page 43 on the site plan. We've, just south of the building, striped in red, it shows how some of that landscaping area, you know, could be removed, curb lines moved to add seven additional spaces. Staff is not recommending that the additional parking be required to be constructed at this time. So we don't anticipate a shortage with the existing amount of parking available. Finding that the proposal meets requirements, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit and the variances. Can take any questions you might have, and the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? All right. This is a public hearing. So if anybody would like to come up and speak for the public hearing, the applicant would like to come up and tell us a little bit about yourselves, that would be great. Just state your name and address and sign in for the record.
My name is Courtney Norgard, and I am the owner of Local Roots. And currently, we are a frozen soup company operating in Minneapolis, but what we'd like to do is take our operation and move it here to Richfield and also open a take our, our operation and move it here to Richfield, and also open a, a coffee shop and a cafe to go along with our, our soups that are all made with locally grown ingredients, that's kind of our, our mission statement, is to, um, support local farmers, locally grown products. Uh, so we'd really like to showcase a lot of these products that we've, um, you know, incorporated into our own products, and then other people that we've kind of met along the way that are making really great local things.
Does anyone have any questions? Alright, thank you, thank you for coming.
Can I just make a statement?
Uh, let's, should we, we should close the public hearing first, yeah. Um, anybody else here for the public hearing? Wanna come up? Anyone? Alright, we'll close the public hearing, is there a motion? Oh, sure. Did you wanna, go ahead, yep.
Yeah, I'm just really excited about this, if it, if it happens and opens, and, um, do you have any thoughts or ideas who will be in the office? Like, has that already been kind of talked about with a kind of partner?
The, the separate retail space?
Yeah.
So, we haven't identified a tenant, um, but we're leaning towards some sort of kind of specialty or boutique, retail, something along those lines. Um, we, we haven't identified anyone, but if you have suggestions, we're open to them.
Okay, thank you, that's great.
Any other questions?
Um, just, yeah, I also think this is, this is great to see, um, I, I'm very excited about the Sixty-Sixth Street project itself, and it's great to have great things going in along Sixty-Sixth, in addition to the street itself. Um, that aside, it's a one, one detailed comment that isn't even really part of our land use approval. Um, the, the bathrooms are designated as men's and women's, uh, and they're both single occupancy bathrooms that seem to be identical. So if it's possible within your building code, I, I would hope that you'd look at maybe making those unisex, both for transgender, uh, customers and just the convenience of all customers, so they can get to a bathroom quickly, but.
Uh, we would like to do that, but it's against, uh, I believe, building code for restaurants. I think we are required to have a men's and women's restaurant.
Oh, really? That, that surprises me, but, but yeah, I'm glad you've looked into that.
I agree with you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we did, um, share that question with the building officials, so we'll get a sort of official response on that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion then to close the public hearing? Is there, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Public hearing's closed, thank you. Um, is there a motion? I will move staff rec- staff recommendation then, um, as-is. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? I, as well, am very excited, so I will say that, and I will come visit and not take up a parking spot, so. How about that? Um, any other, nothing else? Yes, um, alright, well, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Um, and then our third item here is uh, to continue public hearing, to consider an interim use permit for housing with services established at sixty-eight oh-eight Third Avenue to our next meeting, July twenty-fourth, two-thousand-seventeen, it's my understanding the application is not complete-complete, so.
That's correct, we're just waiting on a little more information before we can make a recommendation.
Thank you. Um, we don't have to do a open public hearing, right?
You don't have to open it, you just have to move to continue.
Is there a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue.
And second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are done, um, with our public hearings, so liaison reports, Community Services Advisor Commission, that's me. I've not been able to make meetings, but I'm catching up online, so, um, if anyone is able to make those and would like to go, please let me know, my Tuesdays have gotten filled, so. Um, but they have been talking about their parks master plan, um, I saw, I know, we've kind of been joking and talking a lot about dog parks, but I saw that was a hot topic of conversation, so. Um, that will hopefully continue, um, as those public, um, hearings continue, so. That's it for Community Services, oh, I had one more, they talked about adding a, um, Taft Park. Do you have any more detail on that?
Yes, um, the canoe, yes. They will be adding, um, a dock and a rental station for, uh, now, I can't remember if it's canoes or kayaks, I believe it's kayaks. Um, it will be fully ADA accessible, construction will happen, um, yet this summer. It looks, it looks really great, so.
And it's self-serve, right?
It is, it's self-serve, it's a self-serve, serve kiosk. Um, you just come up, uh, pay for your kayak, they have a number of these stations, uh, along the river, similar. And, um, yep, you'll be able to unlock it and go for your ride in Taft.
I just think that's fantastic. Yeah, it's very cool, so, um, do they have to change any zoning on that?
No, they don't.
Okay. You're like, too done. Uh, city council?
No report.
Um, Housing and Redevelopment Authority?
Last week's, um, HRA meeting was actually a joint work session with zoning and planning and HRA. And, um, we looked at, uh, Cedar Point apartment complex and just some new, new plans and ideas for it. And that was about it?
School board?
No report tonight.
Uh, Transportation Commission?
Um, so they had two things at their last meeting, one was, uh, and this has been going on for quite a while, but the Sixty-Ninth Street In-Street Trail, um, talking about the results on speed, and they found that it did significantly reduce the speeds, they're still higher than maybe we'd like, but it went down from like thirty-nine miles per hour's eighty-fifth percentile speed down to thirty-five, so. The, the intention now is to keep those, those pylons delineators up, um, but possibly making changes to narrow the lanes further to slow speeds, and to give homeowners on the south side a little bit more buffer, 'cause that was one of the complaints, of people trying to mow their lawn and cars getting too close. Um, the other activity that we had that was pretty interesting was, uh, we had a presentation from Udina, their transportation planner, talked to us about Southdale area plans, their transportation plan, and then their sort of land use vision that's come from the community. And it's really, it's really impressive, I think it would be cool if we had an opportunity to look at what they're doing, and to think intelligently about the west side of town and how we might interact our own planning, uh, with theirs. There's certainly a lot of projects going on, and their vision is very audacious, I'll be really impressed if it, if it comes to fruition, so.
Thank you. Um, Chamber of Commerce is Gordon, and he is gone. Um, any other reports, updates? No one? Okay. Uh, city planner's report?
Thanks. I have just a couple of things, just to let you know, um, we are moving forward with the comprehensive plan, our task force has met twice now, we've had some really great discussions. Um, and our task force has been really good about going out and soliciting information from friends and neighbors. We've been handing out paper surveys, uh, there have been over a thousand paper surveys handed out, that doesn't mean they've all come back, but, uh, you know, we've been out talking to all of our neighbors that we can, the survey online has had over nine-hundred unique hits. Um, again, lots of those are hits, people looking around, not necessarily commenting, but, um, in terms of public process and public engagement, those are big numbers, that's more than we've seen in the past. Um, we've also done some pop-up events, uh, riding the buses to try and survey people on the bus. Uh, we were at a Loaves and Fishes event a couple of weeks ago, just trying to make sure we, um, are getting to the folks that we tend to miss at our traditional open houses. A memo is gonna be coming out yet, hopefully this week, I anticipate getting that released on Thursday, just a summary of what we've been hearing and how we'll be, uh, moving forward. We're planning an open house, probably for early August, more traditional open house. Uh, there is a little bit of concern at the staff level that we're missing, we, since we haven't had a traditional open house, uh, we're missing the people who usually come to those. So we're scheduling one, we hope to have some, um, drawings, pro- proposals for the hub area as part of the comp plan update. We're doing a small area plan for the Nicollet and Sixty-S sixth area, the market analysis has been completed, I've seen a draft of that. So, um, our consultants are putting together some concept plans now, hopefully, or we will have those at that open house in August. Uh, there is continuing opportunity to participate in either our, um, online survey or paper survey, that is all online. Task force members are still distributing those surveys, I will be at the farmer's market on July eighth, um, so come talk to me. Um, help me pass the time. Uh, other things to note, all of the materials that we've been handing out at those task force meetings, is, all of that is available online. Uh, there's a lot of good information on the feedback that we've heard so far. Um, and then Matt has one thing to add.
Yeah, uh, so all the, all the talk about facades and bike racks, um, presents an excellent opportunity to plug the matching grants that we have or will soon have for both of those things. Um, we've had, since la- late last summer, uh, we rolled out a bike rack cost share program, and I don't know that we ever specifically, uh, told all of you about that. Um, so you can kind of be our ambassadors, as you always are, in, in the community, and, uh, help get that, help, um, you know, get businesses, uh, to be aware of that these funds are available, and frankly, to get that money spent, and get, uh, get bike racks out in the community. So the, uh, the, the bike rack cost share program is basically a fifty-fifty match. Um, it's funded for the next, uh, couple of years, the, uh, the city will match both the cost of the rack and installation, and it wind, for someone to get one or two racks installed, uh, provided that they have a, an area that, that's suitable, is shockingly affordable. Um, you know, so I, I think i- if, if we get the word out, um, if you've got business, business owners, uh, even apartment building owners, uh, any, uh, social service organizations, um, you know, anyo- anyone really is eligible for this. It's a really easy two-minute application to fill out on the city's website at, uh, richfieldmn.gov slash bike racks. Um, so that application will just come, uh, directly to me, and I get our, uh, bike rack vendor involved, and the whole process, um, can be pretty quick and painless. Um, on Penn Avenue, uh, that, like I said earlier, that, uh, facade improvement grant program is still under development. Um, we're working on what the, basically what the funding cap, uh, per project should be. I believe it was, um, fifty thousand dollars was the total size of the grant from Hennepin County, so it's not a ton of money. Um, so we gotta figure out what the caps per business should be. Um, what eligible types of improvements, uh, wh- what the, basically what the, what the restrictions on, what it could be used for, uh, from signage to entire facade treatments. Um, there's a minimum, there's a minimum amount that the, uh, building owner has to be willing to invest as well. Uh, but more information about that will be available, uh, very shortly, as we hope to roll that out later this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so our next meeting time and location is gonna be July twenty-fourth, two-thousand-seventeen here. Um, if anyone is interested in walking in the parade, I might take my scooter, I don't think I'll walk the whole thing, but, um, wanna join me, please let Melissa know, she'll pass it along. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.